Morning, everybody. It is October 30th. And this is our Friday morning meeting that we have been doing every week since school started. Our COVID check-in. Where we discuss the phases and the models of learning. So I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student. Through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners. Who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded. By Mr. Adams. Our open session called to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have some time for public comment. The administrative items include COVID-19 update, phases, models of learning. Status of athletics. And then we will adjourn. So I'll first to take a roll call and make sure, I assume everyone's okay with the order business. We've been doing it every week, but please just say yes again. Erin Williams?
Yes.
Paul Kendall?
Erin, yes.
Mark Terry?
Erin, yes.
Kathy Bates?
Erin, yes.
And yes, for me as well. So we will get started first by asking if there is anybody here that would like to offer a public comment. And seeing none. I will turn it over to you, Jim, for our COVID-19 update, please.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen to show the dashboard. Hopefully it worked this week, because it didn't last week, and it is appears to be at least on my screen. Can everyone see this? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So as you know. As I stated last week, the data from the. Are we good? I see. The Department of Public Health is publishing their data on Thursday evenings now. It's still the same time period that they're using. But they don't publish it. So I apologize that I don't get this out a little bit sooner. Our consistency is still that 7:00 AM through Thursday morning, 7:00 AM, Ed sends me the information. So the data you get and the data that the Department of Public Health is publishing, it's consistent. So what you'll notice is that, again, while the department has a set. 12.81 cases per 100,000. Through Thursday morning, just because of the way folks fall off from that 14 day rolling number. We have it calculated at 6.66. We have 25 open cases. And what I anticipated fully from the state, and I mentioned this last week, is that we would be in the red again. As you can see, that that cluster on the rolling 14 day cases of six, those numbers. Will not drop off until next week's calculation. But then again, who knows what will happen between. You know. Thursday and Sunday, when. The Department of Public Health adds in their numbers where we have more cases that that come through. So there was a decrease certainly in the in the per 100,000 incident rate. Based on our numbers and. If we're looking at. The continually looking at the the model, the phases, the metrics over here. That puts us back into that hybrid mode. And again, I think it's imperative to understand that. The Department of Education has asked us to really look at three, three weeks worth of the data. For your community. And I think where this board has been pretty consistent. Is that we look at all of the data. If there's community transmission versus transmission within the schools. And I think that's critically important for the community to understand and. And hopefully my email last week, last Friday. Clarified to the community why we didn't necessarily shut down Mindes, but the prior week. We did have to close down the middle and high school for a few days while we performed the contact tracing. So. So hopefully that helped clarify with the community. That we're going to look at all the data and we're going to continually look at what's happening within the schools, but also within the community. To see if there is spread. So again, this puts us in in the hybrid mode. The state puts us in the remote mode. If you look at just purely at the metrics. And then when we move into athletics this week, Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, we would be playing Hopkinton. And. I reached out, Hopkinton is in the yellow. In the yellow. By the state. And. I reached out to Carol Kavanaugh, who's the superintendent of the Hopkinton Schools last night, just because obviously we're. Is it technically as a community in the red? And I wanted to make sure that Hopkinton was comfortable and she knows our situation in terms of of the cluster that created our. Movement into the red. And it's not impacting our schooling. And she was comfortable with athletics. Moving forward this weekend against Ashland. Just just so you're clear, I make sure I make those calls to the superintendents of the of the districts. So Stephen knows that I talked to him last night. Ed, do you want to extrapolate on any of the other information that we have here? I mean, we have 25 open cases. 20 different households, I think you said.
Right. Yep. So that's correct. So the 25 cases are in 20 different households. Some, a couple of those are still holding over from that cluster we talked about last week that have not cleared yet. And I was, I spoke with, just so everyone knows, I spoke with Jim and Audrey last night. Our numbers are probably going to stay consistent for next week based on another cluster that we have, but it's it's there's no impact on our schools. But you will see some. People in our age group, but we can talk more about that later.
So Jim, just one thing I wanted to point out on the. Or clarify, excuse me, on the matrix.
Yep.
And that's the, you know, matrix is talking about. Two data points, right? It's the. Cases per 100,000 as well as positivity rate. And I know that. You know, we can have discussion about what whether the positivity rate is really a good metric, both that it look at or not, but. You know, I think we're actually really in the hybrid model. If we're using those two metrics just on their numbers, right? Because the positivity rate at the state level is, I think, looking at it right, 2.2. 2.21?
Correct.
Right?
So 6.3 this week. Well, it's actually, again, that's, I guess, that's why. We'd have to determine if that positivity rate really means much. The daily positivity rate is in the fives right now, right?
Yeah, right. There are two different numbers there. And I guess so. And all I'm thinking about is just being consistent in how we're going to represent it on this on this chart. Because if we are, if we're looking at the. So all tests rather than new test numbers, right? And we're relying upon the 2.63. Then we're not. We're not in the remote because that number is below four.
Right.
So I'm not. At least I understand fully why that number may not be the right number to be looking at.
Yeah.
It's just something we ought to be thinking about through the how we express things and be consistent about it one way or the other.
Fair enough.
So Mark, mark that upper left corner in the metrics, sorry, upper right corner in the metrics, matrix. You can see after it says hybrid and remote, it says per metrics only. That's where we say like what the metrics are telling us without our as a school committee intervention. And so we have been at a point where those have both said remote, I think might have been last week. But again. One, we need three weeks and two, you add the context. So that per metrics only. Is what. Our state data by the state's numbers would tell us. Would tell us. To do based on the metric guidance from the state.
But when there it's, this is an and, right? In terms of it's 100,000. At being plus seven and a state positivity rate of. Four plus, we're not at a four plus in the positivity rate. And I know there are two positivity rate numbers there. But.
Right. That's why the, that's why the positivity rate says hybrid.
Sorry.
It falls within the hybrid. Zone, so to speak.
So the two colors.
Yeah, I do. I do see this. Maybe I was interpreting those, those colors differently. All right, I'll look up. I don't want to pull people up.
Okay, just further questions or clarification on on this week's data?
So I guess, Jim, I have a few. This is the first time, I think, where we have had the number of households. Being close to the number of cases. Whereas previously, you know, we'd had, say, like 12 cases in three households and it was relatively confined. And then obviously, you know, Ed, you are getting more information. In real time of the new cases that'll be coming in for next week's data. Are we really starting to see? Greater community spread?
That's an Ed question, not a Jim.
Yeah. Yes and no. One of the things is like, again. Erin. Like, for example. There's an apartment building. But the. So. I could lower that number of 20 quote households if I wanted to use that one address. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if I should get. I actually figured it out by apartment number, you know, so. I used, I used the apartment number as a single home.
Yep.
You know? So yeah, technically it could be lower because I know in one apartment building, we have more than. One apartment affected at that address.
Gotcha. Which to me says community spread because if everything's. Coming right or doing right.
Right.
Right? Apartment to apartment, it shouldn't theoretically spread.
And we're working with that facility to increase their cleaning of the common areas.
Okay, and then the. The cases, the two that are the quote unquote high school age and the two that are Mindes age. Are they related cases to each other?
Give me one minute. I got to pull up the spreadsheet to give you that info.
Okay, because the reason why I ask is I had a question from a community member. And it's kind of semantics about data analytics where and. And Jim, previously you've said that we don't have evidence of transmission in the schools. But. The counterpoint, do we have evidence? That it's. Somewhere else and not the schools. And the reason why I ask that is because this community member asked me. Why Hopkington's procedures are so drastically different from our own? Where they're quarantining entire classrooms and testing everybody in a classroom when there's a positive.
Well, I mean, we shouldn't be commenting on what other people's procedures are. We need to be commenting and comfortable with our own procedures. I don't. Honestly care what any other district's doing. We need to be comfortable with what we're doing. So why it's different than somebody else's? I don't think anybody should be commenting on that because that's, I can't tell you why somebody else would do it. And Jim can't tell you why somebody else is doing something.
Well, Paul, I disagree because in that case, it's the more prudent, it's the quote unquote safer of the two options. And based on guidance from like CDC, Fauci, et cetera. So I wouldn't say that we're not allowed to comment on another town's procedures. And I'm just asking why. Like making sure that we are being prudent and maybe that is still not the right decision for Ashland, but it should be at least like. Let's not shut down dialogue on.
It's not shutting down dialogue. You asked why? You do what you asked for us to, Jim, to comment on why we're different than someone else. And.
Asking that in the context of now we seem to be heading in a different direction with our metrics. And so if prevention is key to keep the building open. A more strict application of quarantining and testing might be appropriate. And it is a town next to us, a town that we play sports against in our league. I think it's a valid question and I would like Jim to comment on it, not you.
Sorry. No, that's right. So again, Erin.
Sorry, and Ed.
I, I don't know. Again, I don't know what they're doing in Hopkinton. I don't know what they're doing in Holliston. I'll be clear. I don't follow their their procedures. I would say that we feel comfortable that we're following all guidelines. If there's something within a classroom. That we're looking at what is considered a close contact as defined. And in if, in our situations, I can be. Pretty clear that. I think there's maybe been one, Ed, Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong. We've had one situation where a community member was. Identified inside the school system as potentially having symptoms. And that was it. And all the other scenarios. Folks haven't been in in the actual facility.
Correct.
So. You know, our, our cases, each case is very. Specific and particular. And if we're doing the right things with regard to. Ventilation, wearing our facial coverings and maintaining the appropriate six feet of space throughout the day. And while CDC did change their guidelines in terms of what creates a close contact in terms of the 15 minutes cumulative. You know, that's how we're proceeding and that's the guidance that that we've had. So.
Jim, to that point, when we've had a positive in the school, like the Warren case that you emailed about.
Yep.
How many close contacts have we identified when we've had positive cases?
Well, in this case, you know, I don't want to.
Right. That one didn't come into the school, but in prior cases. Fell ill later in the day. Like, I know there was one who was in a building.
Right. We didn't, we identified zero, I believe, Ed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I, so I would also like, having been in the schools a couple times in the last few weeks, like. I think we're doing an amazing job, but there's kids walking in the hallways shoulder to shoulder. That's not six feet. Now, hopefully it's not like that for more than 15 minutes and then one that's there in the classroom, they're spread out, but. It's not. We have kids that are not following the rules.
I'm sure we do across all the buildings and I'm sure we have adults not following the rules too.
Yeah. So which then makes like the case even when we're, it's not perfect, we're doing still a pretty darn good job.
Yeah, I believe we're doing a heck of a job.
You know, to that point too, Erin and everybody else too, I don't know if I mentioned this last week. One of the things that Audrey and I also do is the minute we see a positive case come through in the community, adult wise. The first thing that Audrey and I do is we go right to iPass.
Yeah.
What we do is we run, we run the last name. And if there's, if we don't see a child matched to that last name, we then run the address in iPass. Just in the event that the child has a different last name and we've actually been able to capture. Children at addresses and we're, we're able to get in contact with them before they even come back to school. So we're putting them in quarantine. Even before the potential that they even came into the building.
Great.
I think one of the other things, you know, and you mentioned community spread and Ed, keep me honest here. A vast majority of our cases actually came due to travel or something like that and were contracted external to Ashland, right?
Either travel or gatherings in the community. That is a majority, absolutely.
And just ask you a question I kind of typically ask you, I think, which is. As you look at the the new cases this week. You know, trends that you're seeing, things that are common without getting the individual people's circumstances. But you know, I think last week, for example, we were, you were able to tell us that. You were able to identify where it was contracted in all cases except one where a person just had no idea where they were contacting anybody. Can you give us that sort of information on the cases that are new since last week?
Yeah, absolutely. I will be able to tell you that I do know of for this week, five are from a out of state hockey tournament. I can tell you that. We're working on it. I'm working with DPH on that one. There's five right there. With potentially more. Testing positive out of a total of 34 additional people. Again, that is going to bump our numbers this week. Absolutely, we can tell gatherings. Everybody can usually figure out, we have, we have a scenario in a church. Where we've asked a church in town to please not have services for 14 days. So we're definitely, we definitely see it in these gatherings, absolutely.
Ed, the hockey ones are those new post. The governor directive on hockey?
This is a private team. With, I'll just say for now, ties to Ashland. None of the children go to Ashland Public Schools.
It has nothing to do with the, the governor's order on.
Correct.
Massachusetts rinks being closed.
Right. But, but we will take the hit on the numbers.
Right. Further questions with that? With the numbers or athletics concerns there? Because otherwise, you know, again, I'm just going to recommend we maintain our our hybrid model for next week as we have it currently.
Jim, I think I. Supportive of continuing on as you're recommending. I guess, and I'm not necessarily looking to have this conversation now, but maybe it's a regular school committee discussion. I'm just curious as to how you're thinking about, because I'm sure you are, all of you. You know, sort of what what we're looking at in terms of. What's going to start to change our thought process? Are we really going to be focusing on, you know, if we've got kids spreading in the classroom? Or volume of cases with kids? You know, I'm not, and I'm not looking to define it or boxy into it. I think these are going to be discretionary calls. Based on the same kind of factors we've been talking about every week, but. I'm sure you're like everybody else, which is a little itchy and a little concerned about how long we're going to be able to do this. And. You know, I sort of looked at the state map yesterday and it's just more red everywhere, at least in the eastern half of the state. So, you know, I don't know if that's a conversation we need to get into now. And, you know, Laura, I defer to you on that, but. You know, it feels like it may be a conversation we should be having at some point because it'll lead to a decision.
I think it's fair, Mark, to at least start talking about, especially, you know, with holidays coming up and what our expectations. Are for families and staff so that we can stay in school for as as long as possible, given what we all are witnessing around us. And I feel like it's becoming increasingly complicated. I mean, I think it's great that we're doing these meetings every week to try to break down what's actually happening here. And we've been really. Successful in school by staying on top of that. And to Erin's point, you know, while. Comparing us to others, you know, it's kind of like, you know, Suzie's mom, blah, blah, blah. But on the other hand, there are different approaches and it's fair that we understand. That why we're choosing one over the other and whether there are other options that we haven't considered. And it's clearly what we're doing, I think, is is working well. We were able to start. Relatively on time. And we've been able to have sports and I, we've heard from our students last week and they're so thrilled that they can. Interact with each other in sports and in school for the days that they're there. But on the other hand, we, and on top of that, the state continues to. Change their. I don't know if you can even call it guidance, but first it was like, if you're in remote for three weeks, then you should consider, I mean, if you're in the red for three weeks, then that's the time when you consider going remote. You know, don't do it before that. Now they're saying, you know, you might be in remote for three weeks, but we want you to do everything you can to stay in. I mean, it's just the constant. Changing of, I mean, I want to have that conversation too, Mark, but I'm not even sure. What we're looking at now for, and other than these weekly meetings with hearing from Ed and Audrey and Jim about what's really happening in our buildings. And I think also too, with Jim's conversations. With the staff and Michelle. And understanding. You know, how they're feeling about all of it. All of those things. Are factors. So I think it's important to start the conversation. I don't know if we have any answers to what where the line is because metrics are helping. They're helping guide some conversations, but clearly there's no like, if this happens, then we do this. We're. That's not.
Yeah, it's kind of like the goals conversation we were talking about, right? It's it's a continual improvement. It's a continual conversation around. You know, what, what, what are we seeing? You know, relating that back to the things we've decided we were going to do. Are they still appropriate? Do we still think they go far enough? Stuff like that. I think it's. You know, that's the value of these of these Friday calls, right? We can. We're not waiting the two weeks or more. We're continually having the conversation and. And I think it's, there's no bad time to start it, Mark. I think we, we should always be having those conversations.
And one of the things I think I, that kind of dawned on me is that compared this, these conversations. Value of really understanding what's going on and looking at the state map. Is the state map, you know, this whole green, yellow, red. Really is, is not healthy in my view, because if, you know, you go red, it pushes a certain psychology of, oh, my God, I'm red. And that's appropriate from a statewide and a community wide perspective. But from the perspective of making decisions for the schools. You know, I think certainly, and I do agree with Desi's guidance on this point, looking at what's going on within our buildings is really important. You know, and not just taking data. I don't, I don't need to push that conversation forward today, but it felt like it's really something I've been thinking about. And I think it's something that. You know, I didn't know whether people wanted to do that through these meetings or. Sort of put them on the agenda as a broader discussion for our next regular, but I don't think our next regular meeting is till week before Thanksgiving. So. Things are going to change more rapidly, most likely.
Mark, I think we should probably discuss it in one of the Friday meetings because of the holiday. And I guess. Jim, if you could research, like I read a news article, but obviously I don't have the direct connect with Desi and the guidance, but. But some school committees considering being remote either like the week or two weeks after Thanksgiving or even. Like more drastically remote from Thanksgiving break on until the first of the year. And just understanding the cost benefit, like I know the, from a Desi standpoint, it would trigger an audit. What does that really mean? Is that a slap on the wrist? Is it whatnot? But. You know, what are our options and being proactive before the holidays versus reactive, I guess, as far as like waiting till there's cases and then closing? So Mark, Mark, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think that's a good transition. And Jim asked me to, he and I had a conversation about Thanksgiving in particular yesterday. He wanted me to. At least start our conversation on that and. It kind of, there's two things I was going to bring up today. I am sending you all right now a draft. Travel policy relative to COVID. We mentioned this before that we were going to look into doing that. We've had a conversation. We're doing it a little differently. Kathy and I have not met on this as a subcommittee, just but that's. Partly just because of the time concerns and things like that to make sure we're, we're beating, getting something out there and reviewing it and potentially having something in place for, for. For the holidays. But we, you know, Jim and I met with, with Ed and Audrey on this. I'll let them speak to some of their continued concerns, but. Particularly around the travel thing, I'll just briefly. So. The goal is I wanted to be able to bring it up here so we could get it out to you. For potentially discussing as potentially a first read next week. But essentially the thing we're looking to do there is the current state travel order. I think we're all fairly confident that it's not very effective as a control because it says. You can, you know, not quarantine if you have a negative test within 72 hours of returning. But if. I could go down to Florida for two days and get tested before I even leave. And that's valid. So. It doesn't make a lot of sense. And so this tries to go beyond that and set some, some guidelines. And as you read it, the way I've framed it within my conversations with. Ed, Audrey and Jim is. If we believe we're doing a good job with our protocols in school. And we believe that should someone come into our schools that is asymptomatic and. But has COVID, that. The likelihood that they're spread it if people are following our protocols is relatively low. That's one layer. If we step back, how do we? Then the goal of this would be, how do we weed out? A significant number of those people that would be coming in and potentially have it due to travel. And how do we go beyond what, what the state is? So throwing that out there, but just. It, it kind of ties into the Thanksgiving thing. But also Jim was going to ask me to bring up the Thanksgiving and just to reiterate what. Our conversation was. Our conversation was yesterday. And him, he and I were both flip flopping back and forth on what we thought. Part of me is like, let's just be remote the next, the week after Thanksgiving. But with me having looked at the policy and now giving it to you, if we have that in place. And we believe our protocols in schools do a fairly good job and we have this in place. What, what would, what would be in remote bias? I'm, I'm not sure of that. Also, what if we fit, go into the situation and we find out later in the week or the weekend. And that, that next weekend of some cases, they don't, it doesn't, Ed and Audrey don't have time to contact trace. And we're into that same situation where we went remote. You know, a couple of weeks back. Now we're remote for two weeks and what did that, you know, so. So that's essentially the, the conversation and I'll, I'll be quiet now, but I, I just stepped in there just because Jim had wanted me to. Bring that up to the group today. So I, I don't know where I stand on it. Part of me says go remote, but then if we believe. In what we've, what we've put in place and it seems to be working. Then part of me says, doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. And we're negatively impacting students and families, right? It, it's, and the other thing that I mentioned to Jim is fully aware that holidays aren't great for everyone, right? And for those that it's not great, it's a lot of times the places where the, the home isn't the best, most welcoming. Place in the world for them. And so it's not to provide that respite for those students where. You know, school is a, a safer place that following week. You know, that, that, that's a challenge for me. If there's not a, if we're, if we're not, if we don't have. Confidence that we're, you know, have an effect, we're doing something that's going to positively affect our ability to stay open, right? If so, if we're, we're doing it just out of abundance of caution and we don't, we can't really tie anything to it. You know, there, there are, there are cons to, to doing that as well, so.
Jim, I just want to pick up on one thing Aaron said as well, and that's. You know, if, if we are looking at a transition at some point, which I think we went into this year figuring we would at some point. Not only for how long, transition to full remote. I'd be interested in maybe some dialogue at that time, not now. When we pick up the conversation, understanding sort of. Operationally, you know, what is a transition? Kind of notice what you want. The only thing to give to staff so that they can do whatever, whatever they need to do to prepare to be now going full remote. If they're doing that from, whether they're doing it from school building or whether they're doing it. That would be, that would be an important factor in making some of these decisions and be an important factor in communicating with the. With the school community, parents and students as well.
Yeah, I, I think, Mark, to that point. The more notification, the better, right? In terms of a week or two in advance. This is why sort of formulating the conversation with regard to Thanksgiving. You know, having that beginning conversation now, just bringing it up is, is important. I think if, if the board decides that's the, the route that needs to be taken. And to your point, Aaron, 43 school districts have reached out to me and only three of them have decided that they're even moving forward with considering. Closing after Thanksgiving. There are a couple outliers like Lincoln Sudbury who's saying, hey, let's close from Thanksgiving through the end of December, but that's Lincoln Sudbury. And, but for the most part. Again, 40 districts have said, we're not doing anything different. We're anticipating opening the week after Thanksgiving. Now that's as of last Friday, that things can change quickly, obviously with how the numbers are, are. Impacting each district, so.
And Jim, that's just Lincoln Sudbury, not Sudbury.
Just LS, correct.
Yeah. So it's, it's kids that have misbehaved already and.
Well, it's also they already, they're in a very different.
Right.
Model anyway. They're not, you know, true, they're not like our hybrid. They're for the most part pretty remote. But that being said. Mark, to your point, I, I think the sooner we make decisions, the better for all parties involved. Preparing just for remote teaching is very different than preparing just for the, the hybrid in class model as well, so. I think we'd had the conversation that we would give families a full week's notice. Previously, but I don't think we ever defined what that looks like.
But I mean, I'm pretty sure conversation and I don't know them now, but I think it, it does make sense for us to be all, all be thinking about it like we all are. And, you know, kind of continue it from week to week is I think all suggested.
Yeah, like maybe as we get closer, and I guess this is the million dollar question that we're all trying to solve every week and it's kind of complicated, but. But we can already see how some of our metrics, you know, we're probably going to have another week, maybe in the red and still for still doing great in school. We're still going to do school and that's why we do this, but. More so for like Ed and Audrey from a public health perspective. And I won't put you on the spot to answer this right now, but I guess as we continue this conversation. I guess I'm wondering in your own minds whether there's some. Some. Point in your minds that you're looking for, where is the turning point where we can't do school anymore? Or is it more the kind of thing is, we'll, we'll know it when we see it. And that's, I guess, will help us decide, you know, not so much again, whether. It seems premature right now to say, at least from the perspective of Ashland and how we're doing, to say we're not going to come back after Thanksgiving. To say that right in this moment, but at the same time, again, we see what's happening around us. We see the increase in cases. And there's also a real need to plan for, for everybody's benefit. So, you know, I would just like to hear more about. What? When it. When it will seem like we can't do this anymore. From a public health perspective.
You know, um. You know, it's funny, you know, if, and I, I, I think I struggle with this every day. You know, I, you know, when if you just look at the numbers, you're like, oh, you know, but that's why I like to literally break it down. And, and I'm, and then like after I break it down, I'm like, no, we're good to go here, you know? And those are the conversations that Jim and Audrey and I have every single day. You know, because we, you know, we're living it every day. So. I think it's a, again.
It's like a moment to moment thing for you.
Moment to moment, right?
Yeah, like at some point it might cross the line and then you'll.
Exactly.
And you'll share that with us.
Exactly, you know, listen, it, it, it could almost be just like, almost like a snow day. Hey, we're going to get a storm and we've got to make a decision right now.
Thank you.
Like you did a couple of Mondays ago.
Right. Lori, I'm going to have to hop off here to get Matthew to school a minute or two.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't want to shortcut the conversation, but also. To do that. Is there anything that we need to do other than just be thinking about it and be talking more about it next Friday morning?
Paul, will you next week have, before next week have a policy, draft policy for us to review?
He's already sent it.
You just sent it.
Okay.
Paul, or Jim, do you, do you think maybe you attached that or mentioned this in your. Your email today later to the community, just to let them know we're thinking about a policy such as this, give them a heads up. But Paul, I'm looking at it now. It doesn't say draft on it. I don't know if you would want to attach that, Jim? Or if you just want to mention it.
I didn't, I didn't put a watermark on it, no, but.
Yeah.
The file name says draft, right?
Oh, all right, okay.
Well, it's going to take us, any new policy.
Right.
It, it will be a, a first discussion and then a second discussion at a minimum.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know that it's appropriate to share any details about something that we haven't even discussed yet. Once really in an official capacity where it's been on an agenda.
Although it's public.
Yeah, right. So I think that's kind of the right process is to put it on our agenda. People that want to have input on it can come and make public comment or write to one of us or write to Jim. And then there'll be a second opportunity for all that. I think is better than, because we don't know. I mean, none of us have discussed it with each other.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, Lori, though, to get two reads in before the holiday, we would need to have one of the reads be a Friday meeting, right?
Or we. Both, both of them are going to have to be Friday.
It's going to have to be, right.
At the earliest, it would be two weeks from today before we have an actual policy.
Okay. Right, which is November 13th, November 13th, so.
Right.
Yeah, but, but if you're comfortable with it, I, I do think it's probably, you know, prudent for Jim to say. We're considering a policy to exceed the, the state. The state guidelines and to consider that to these people, so that when the agenda comes out, they're, they're, they're expecting us to talk about it next week.
Sure, I'm fine with that. Something just about what we're, what we're discussing, because what we've decided is not even. We haven't.
There's nothing decided.
Yeah, so the fact that we are just, are going to discuss it next week, that there, you know, that we're going to look, we're looking at something that goes beyond the state guidelines.
Right, as we prepare for the holiday break, these are some of the things that we are.
Yeah.
Taking a look at.
Yeah, I think it is premature to share it with them, obviously, because it's be, same time, you've seen it, so.
Right.
Right, I've got to jump off, guys.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mark. I think we're coming close to the conclusion.
Yeah.
Like we're all in agreement to continue with our current model. I mean, we have some things to think about for moving forward and I don't know if there's anything anybody else wants to share. I would athletics is on the agenda and it sounds like things are going well there and that we're still. Playing everybody who we're planning on playing this week.
Jim, the only thing is that you need to change on the left side, change the left axis to go to 13 instead of 10. Because right now the top is cut off for Ashland and for Houston.
Okay.
So, so Lori, do you think we should have Thanksgiving on an agenda item as well to highlight the, you know? I, I think if we are going to consider it earlier, the better for making that decision. Or at least letting the, the community know as of time X, we're thinking not doing or doing something, right? Similar to what we've been talking about, the, the more. Notice we can give people the better for that, right?
And I, I agree with that a hundred percent, but I think it depends on when Jim, you know, and Ed and Audrey are ready to. Have that conversation, you know, at some point, are you guys feeling like? You're ready to make a decision about it? Do you want to have a deadline to make a decision? And it might be different from a snow day thing where you're kind of making the decision when the event is actually happening. Versus do we want to give ourselves a deadline to make a decision for the notice piece of it? I think those are the two approaches and I'm not quite sure which one everybody is recommending here.
Just my opinion, if, if we don't have new, extremely new data, something that pushes us to a different decision. I think we have to have the decision at no later than the 13th, right? We need, we need to give people notice. If it, based on what we know, obviously if the 19th, something dramatic happens, we're, we're doing that, but not because of Thanksgiving.
Right.
Right, we're doing that because of the, this conversation, people just need to think about, including Ed and Audrey and Jim. And have an idea of what we think is in, because of Thanksgiving, right? And, and I think one of the, one of the things is the, the policy I just sent out would be a factor in that decision.
Right.
If that's in place, does that change anybody's feeling? And a wrinkle from my perspective also is. You know, and, and I don't know, and I don't mean to, you know, put, put Stephen on the. You know, on, on the point here, but. From my perspective, we might make a decision because we feel really good about our protocols in school. How are we doing with practices and things like that? And would we make a different decision for, hey, let's take a week off if there, if we don't feel as comfortable for sports? And I'm just saying that as a, as a, as a permutation to think about not saying we are, aren't doing a great job there, right? But that's another thing that popped in my mind. I'm like, okay, I don't know. I can, I can state that, hey, if, even if somebody walked into a school that has it, if we're following our protocols, I feel pretty good that the likelihood of that spreading is low. Do I feel the same way on, on the practice field? I, I assume we do, but just that's the other wrinkle for me.
Well, Jim, do you have any recommendations on when's the appropriate time to have that conversation?
No, I, again, all I can state is I think sooner rather than later. I mean, if, and again, mind you, if we do this, if, if someone, if, if we decide to. To take some time off after Thanksgiving, now what do we do for the December break? What do we do for the February break? What do we do for the April break, setting a precedent as to how we're going to deal with those breaks? So. We can't lose sight of that either. So people are going to, what's the expectation? The December break is a little bit longer. Do we now extend it through part of January? So, but teachers and families need to know sooner rather than later.
Right, and I'm, I'm totally fine with that, but let's say, I don't know, we start, we, I think. That conversation, obviously because of the timing of everything has to happen sometime in the next couple of weeks, right?
I agree.
Either next week or the week after.
I think by that 13th, yeah, by the 13th is, is certainly, that's only a week, right?
But let's say like one hypothetical though, is like we're, say we're. Our numbers are the same as they are right now and for whatever reason, we decide to just keep moving forward with what we're doing because it's working. There's still two weeks where the, as Ed said, it's a minute to minute thing. They, data can change and then we, we're out. You know, so yeah, so it's, it's kind of one of those things. I think we should definitely have a conversation.
I, I think Lori, to that point, that's where we have to have flexibility. See, if, if we're, if we're there during that Thanksgiving week and we're meeting on Friday of that Thanksgiving week.
Right.
Our normal Friday meeting and we are seeing these numbers just explode.
There's no coming back, right?
We have to make a decision right then and there.
But, but, but that, but that's based on the data, not because of Thanksgiving. So we're making, we're, we're not guaranteeing we're going to be in on Thanksgiving.
Right.
After Thanksgiving, we might be saying we are not going remote because of Thanksgiving. But the data could still say we're going remote regardless of whether that was Thanksgiving or just a normal week.
That's right.
Yeah, well, I think it's fair to everybody that we have a conversation about it. And whether the timing, the best timing for that is next week or the week after. I'm going to take your recommendation on that, Jim, because I know you're working with Michelle. And.
I mean, should we, should we put both on both agendas?
Yeah, just have it on there. I, yeah.
And then at least tells everybody we're thinking about it.
We're thinking.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's very tricky.
And again, I want to be, you know, I'll be honest, the more days we can be in person, the better. And I mean, that's just how I feel. The, the more days we can see our kids and teachers can see our kids, the better off we're going to be in the eventuality of, of having to close down.
Right, and then again, that just goes back to the steps that everybody, the personal responsibility that everybody is taking.
Absolutely.
And, and I'll share, you know, this is going to be the first time and, you know, we've been married for 32 years. We've never not had Thanksgiving with our extended family. And two thirds of the family lives in my neighborhood and we're still not having Thanksgiving with them. And we're all really, really super sad about it. But feeling that that's the right thing to do. There's babies involved, there's elderly people involved, there's immunosuppressed people involved and. You know, and people who are in various other employment situations where they shouldn't be exposed to lots of people. So anyhow, my point is really that. This is a, a decision that everybody has to take responsibility for, just like we've been saying all along. But it doesn't work if, if people don't do what we know is helping us stay in school now.
Yep.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so we're staying in hybrid and any, anything else anybody wants to add or share or ask before we go? All right, well then I will take a motion to adjourn. Thank you again, thank you to everybody for all your effort and all of this. It's extremely complicated and all the stuff. We appreciate all of you and.
Thanks, I'll motion that we adjourn.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in favor, Erin.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I couldn't tell her Erin was seconding or saying something.
I know, I thought she was like, hold on a second.
I thought she seconded it, yeah. So yes for Erin, Kathy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes, for me, Mark has already left the conversation, so have a great weekend, everybody and.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for keeping us.